We are meeting with the DAC leadership to talk about DAC priorities and goals and kind of how we can collaborate together. So I think what I will do, we have Jorge on Google meets and we have Richard on Google meets. Otherwise, I guess I can.
Okay. That is the number one question for me.
Garcia.
Here.
Get heart.
Here.
Disney.
Here.
Rajpal.
Here.
Sergeant.
Here.
Sweeney Baran.
Here.
This.
Here.
All right, that's all. Thanks. And we have the DAC leadership here. And so what I think I will do is I was just going to turn it over to Jorge to start us off with the priorities that you and DAC have talked about for the year. I know you have a long list and we have to figure out how we prioritize and what are the most important kind of where we can collaborate. So if that's all right with you, Jorge, and this will just turn it over to you. Okay.
Hi, thank you. Yes, I think I heard you correctly that we'll just kind of both, I'll introduce our list of priorities and then we'll kind of think about how to prioritize from there. If that's correct. All right, thank you for having us here. The DAC leadership this year consists of myself, Chris Hance and General Richmond, who are a part of the exec team. And we're in the process of figuring out our first member of the exec team from moving forward. And I appreciate the chance to come here and have this conversation. Also, thank you for letting me participate virtually. I'm recovering from COVID, so my voice is kind of going in and out and I might start coughing, so my apologies for that. We have a bit of agenda this year and a set of priorities. We have a lot to kind of consider. As you know, the UIP schedule has changed, and so that's kind of first on our priority calendar for us this year. That we have to review the UIP process for the next two years or the UIP that will drive the strategic plan for the next two years. We have a presentation at our first DAC meeting in September. And we've already heard some feedback from our membership about things to address within that just informally. In particular, the need to address factors, very broad factors like institutional locus, which contribute to many of the disparities that the UIP is designed to address, but which aren't very well reflected right now in the current UIP. So the DAC exec is kind of want to discuss this, and we had a chance to meet with Superintendent Anderson as well to think about how to move forward on this. So our plan at this point is to kind of meet with leadership from other key stakeholder groups like PAC and COPO to think about how our UIP can better address this issue. So that's kind of one key priority of the year. You know, part of the UIP is reviewing data, and so I think throughout the year we'll continue to think about data transparency and how to improve data since it is a continual process. To kind of how to get better data that really adheres to kind of what we are trying to change within the UIP. Another priority for us is going back to review some of progress towards our budget recommendations from last year. In particular, the ways in which the district is approaching long-term planning. And I think at some point throughout this year, you know, in the short term, we need to provide feedback on the budget plan for this coming year. But we'd like to also revisit a long-term planning model that district is renewing for moving forward as part of this year's work. We've received the policy review schedule that the board has prepared, and I know Christmas speaks to this more specifically. But that's going to be a key focus for us this year, particularly thinking about family engagement and how to kind of connect with other kind of parent groups. Especially our family engagement committee within the DAC. And a couple of years ago, we reviewed some of the discipline of the SRO program for the district. And we'd like to kind of touch base and circle back to some of those recommendations and see the progress that they made for the district. I know that there's a school safety foster program. We're moving towards more restorative justice practices and trainings for teachers and view resources as coordinator. We've left at the health resources. We've got a new discipline matrix to consider. So I think we'd like to kind of go back and revisit some of those issues and see kind of where the district stands on these issues. Those are kind of, I know it's a long list, but those are kind of things that we think are going to be popping up on our calendar for this year. We'd like to revisit in some way when we look forward to hearing back your perspective. And Chris, if there's anything that you'd be like, please do so.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Jorge. Thanks for the overview and just to kind of add a little more to the policy plan. I think we were concerned that DAC is encouraged in drafting, like in fact, on the policy K groups, general funding, continuing to build policies and send over the existing BBS to policy at KBA. And we did a quite a lot of work drafting that document since it's a feedback from Kathleen, who have started the process. We're looking at that here, bringing it to that capital and other groups. That work, we're in under connection last year, doing more DAC struggles, so we're looking at teams to pick that back up this year. And we saw that as a part of the policy, not the work that Kathleen worked out with Kathleen, so we're excited about that. So we want to hit on that this year. Also, we want to align on KB and KBR, the school advisory committees and the district committees, which the DAC policies committee worked pretty extensively with two years ago before we took that. So we want to kind of figure out if we can leverage some of that work in our policy group at that time to bring that policy back for the revision. And then the other kind of areas that showed up on the policy that were a lot, the DAC policies subcommittee that we just had, not last year, or open enrollment, open enrollment policies, CCAR was one that showed up as well. The policy subcommittee last year, which was the perfect option for after and instructional materials policies. We do schedule that work out that month as well. So we're hoping to be able to contribute to our business. It's a busy review schedule. We've got a lot of pre-order done, especially on KB and KBR. So we're hoping to. And that's it, all right. That's my policy.
You know, I'm having a hard time hearing. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Richard.
I had a hard time hearing the last presenter.
Amala's trying to see if she can, she's getting a mic.
And I'm masked, Richard. Does that help make me clear?
Not help.
Okay, well, fair enough. So.
I can't understand you very well either.
Oh, my apologies, Katie. So in a nutshell, we want to continue supporting KB work on that draft work that was started last year. See if we can recover the work on AE and AER that was done by the PAC DAC policy subcommittee. And then newly contribute to open enrollment and curriculum and instructional materials adoption policies, which showed up on the review schedule and aligned with the interests of the DAC policy subcommittee. That was, that's the shortened version, Richard. Thank you for the opportunity to make it more concise.
So given our timeline and the front end work that DAC has to do with budget and UIP early on this year and still tidying up KB, KBA, Kathleen, does it make sense that they would not do first passes maybe on some of those other policies? That they would do a second pass or after your team has made some recommendations on curriculum and some of those other policies?
Yeah, you know, we've honestly, we've done it both ways. We've had times where DAC has taken the lead and we've had other times where I do. I think that we were pretty candid in our conversation that we'd like to be seeing and acting on more policies than I can do by myself. So I am working on my control issues. And I think that we can just figure out based on subject area content where to start. But on AE and AER, we do have, I have the DAC packet that stayed at April 2020. And then DAC did take first stab at KB. So I'm working on KB just to get it consistent with our style book mainly. And then we'll be distributing that internal stuff as well, that we hope to have done in the spring. But I think Chris and Terry and I are planning a meeting in the next couple of weeks where we can sort some out and just have each entity start some so that we can get more work done. I welcome the horsepower.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're happy to help, Richard, with the horsepower and we're glad to have the members of the policy subcommittee and they're very keen to progress. Hopefully, as Kathleen indicated, because of some of the work that's already been done on some of those bigger ones that'll accelerate the process and allow us to kind of. So we're excited. And we also, at the end of the year last year, I had the draft draft translated through the district's transition services in Spanish. So that we can better facilitate the number of groups. So Kathleen, I can say that we're all back to a good community.
Richard, did you hear that?
Took my mask off that time. Sorry, Richard, I was just indicating that on the policy KB, last year at the end of the year, DAC had the policy draft translated into Spanish so that we could better engage and solicit feedback and input from capital and other groups. So we're hoping to continue to close that feedback at the beginning of this fall and collect more feedback on that policy draft.
So this might be for Rob either one. Jorge mentioned long-range planning, and I'm wondering, is that a simultaneous discussion with our long-range planning committee that we just put together? Is it supplement to that? It seems like we put this huge group together for a reason, and I wouldn't want someone to duplicate efforts if we already have this big group. What does that look like? I'm confused about that.
So I'll have to have Jorge clarify on kind of his desire or DAC's desire to review that. I will say that in the budget process recommendations that DAC made last year, there was some recommendations specific to the idea of long-range planning. So Jorge, are you talking about maybe revisiting the process as we establish it to see how that aligns to the recommendations? You're not talking about conducting your own long-range planning processes as DAC, right?
That's right. It's more about getting, closing the loop in terms of what structures we've put in place and what your plan looks like based on our recommendations from last year. Recognizing that, you know, it's going to take some time to figure out the long-term plans.
So Jorge, I have a question. You talked about data transparency, which these days is kind of buzzwords for, are we not being transparent in our data? And I'd love to know what data you're looking for and why you use the word transparency? And can we be a little more specific in what that looks like?
Yes, thank you. When I'm talking about data, it's really kind of tied to the UIP. I know that Jonathan Dings and the data teams are working to make data accessible to schools and parents. And really, it's more about feedback about what data looks like and helping to improve data quality so that it can be more useful for principals in terms of, so addressing things like labels and information to make the data usable, but also thinking about ways in which we can get more fine-tuned data so that we can get reports that provide a little more detail. So matching up things like incidents and be able to kind of connect it to, for example, the matrix. They would be able to kind of see if the data is giving us the information that we want. And if you can get more detailed data, it kind of tease out, you know, separating incidents from response as a way to tease out where the metrics are actually getting us to where we need. Sorry, I'm not sure if that answered your question.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that we can be responsive to what the data requests are that you're making and what specificity you want. Because there's a lot of information out there about the UIP, so I get trying to make it more accessible to parents. So I just think the more specific you can be around that, the better we can respond. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes, that makes sense. I agree.
Chris, welcome. This is nodding. So is there some, how do you foresee that work going forward? On the data that you want, because I, tell me if I'm wrong, but it seems like the UIP is your number one priority currently. And figuring out how to bring other groups, what data you need around the UIP, what changes you all propose to the UIP. So that's why I'm wondering about the data transparency and the issue that we all get to the same place.
Yes, it really is kind of playing the UIP primarily and kind of our priorities on there. I know we're supposed to check in quarterly on that, so I think it was more than that vein in terms of, you know, being able to better translate the data that we have available and making sure that it's meeting our needs.
So are you thinking more like about the implementation benchmarking for the quarterly data? Or is it the, I mean, there's just so much, so many things that you could look at within the UIP.
Part of it is implementation benchmarks, right? And I think that we'll speak to that directly in our kind of recommendations, you know, this year, like early on, right? But then it's also revisiting in terms of the type of data we're collecting to make sure that we're getting the information that we want. Kathy, as board members speak, could they identify that? Because I have this little tiny picture here and I can't, I can't see them stop.
Sorry, Richard, that was Nicole.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Richard, this is Rob. Just a thought. If we know that there's data that we want to be looking at and identifying the use to measure progress and create greater clarity on what's happening and what's not happening, you know, the sooner we can know what that data looks like, so then we can go back and figure out, you know, how we would agree to present that. I think that it can get tricky if we wait till after the fact and then we start asking for data and then we're not able to provide the data because of whatever limitations we might have. And then that creates a sense of just confusion, right? You know, DAC asked for this data, the district couldn't provide the data, right? And, you know, I'm very, and I think that our entire, our board, our district has really embraced this idea of being more transparent than ever with our data to look at our big issues that we've, that we've agreed to work on, which is disproportionality, you know, achievement gaps and opportunity gaps. And have really worked hard to get that. So if you need a deeper cut or you need something different or specific, to know what that looks like early before the data's already there, right? That we can then agree upon, this is how we can do that, this is what we can do, and then we get to an agreement. Then you know it's coming, it's more predictable as opposed to wait until after the fact that we hear some, we have some assumptions on what happened and we're looking for data points that might lead to the assumptions that we thought. I think it is much better if you can identify those early, come to agreement on those. And to the extent that we can, I can manage my team's time on pulling the data. Because if it comes as an RF, if it comes as a.
Cora?
A cora, right? As if it's not created or generated, it just, I think the earlier we can figure that out, the better off, I think the more satisfied DAC would be, the better off our team's time would be. I think that's the best way to build trust.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, thanks, Rob, for mentioning that. Yeah, I think the way we envisioned this is continuing the work that we did last year, looking Jonathan Dings to kind of troubleshoot the data as it's coming prepared, you know, at the quarterly reports. And I did it and working with him, right, collaboratively to problem solve on data that we have available to us. So it wasn't in the form of, you know, call requests or anything like that. It's more, I think it's through, you know, where we see issues with the data with the district.
And Richard, this is Chris. Jorge, the other thing I'm going to add to this, and I put a bit of it forward, is I think one of the things that DAC tried to put together last year was circulate and socialize some resources that helped our DAC representatives communicate down to their sats and the parents in those schools how to actually read and to the leaders and interpret the now greater amounts of data that are included in the dashboards and so on. I think that's one of the things we want to continue as well, you know, how to empower our company to counter those dashboards, find areas where they can like, there's some gaps or inconsistencies. And to Jorge's point about, you know, the hygiene and regularity, that's, you know, as we have more eyeballs on this or people trying to find and derive actionable insights from the data, that we can improve it with those good feedback. So I think that's part of the project as well, is further empowering our DAC representatives versus school advisory committees to take action. So all that is to say, that may lead to things like mission success. That's what I'm hoping. Sorry.
So is there any data right now that you guys think that you would want to talk to Rob and staff about? That we can, to Rob's point, get in front of, I mean, the sooner I think we know and can have a conversation, the better. So I don't know, since we're just starting the UIP process again, I don't know that there is, but I just thought I would ask.
For example, what comes to mind immediately is looking at our disproportionate discipline data, right? The way it's reported now, you see the disproportionality, right? So you get a proportion of students of racial, ethnic makeup, right? And you see what proportion they are within the expulsions, right? And so you see it as this way, but it's hard, but you know, we don't have data that lets us kind of tease out, well, are they coming out from different types of, sorry, a little, well, here, you don't have information of the types of incidents, right? That are leading to these disproportionals or the type of responses for specific types of incidents, right? So fine-tune data like that, I think, is much more useful for this process to adjust the disproportionality that's present versus not present.
That makes sense, right? Because I know that we've already had conversations when you're looking at expulsions or suspensions, right? Are you then taking the next layer to say, you know, are white students or students of color getting suspended or expelled for the same things or different things? And why? And of those, how many of those are subjective versus more objective, clear-cut defined within the code? Because that's the level that we'll probably need to dig in together to begin to think about our code. You can think about, you know, where is our, our discipline matrix need to be adjusted? Where does it, where is it working? Where is it failing? And looking at the differences and then taking those. And then, you know, we can do, if there's a certain level with DAC, then there's a certain level for us, our team, to start to digging around. When you, when you talk about, are there certain schools that have a certain number of suspensions that have certain codes that don't show up in other places? What was the training that was involved? What's happening? But we'll have to get this specific if we want to move the needle on this in the ways that we all aspire to, right? You know, this idea that we're, especially around this one, because it's so disproportionate. And it's certainly a priority for us. But yeah, so that makes a lot more sense, Jorge, that, you know, you're thinking about deeper cuts to better understand the 30,000-foot view that we're showing, to get into the details to understand what's happening and what's not. And I can see that being a really strong collaborative effort.
So Rob, I think if we understand the data better, we can actually start identifying more specifically causes, is that what I'm hearing? So for example, there was one piece on the draft UIP where it dropped a little bit, it's in passing probably, about implicit bias. But in many of the other disproportionality, they didn't mention anything that has to do with subjective bias. I see, because we don't have that information, we don't have that data. So we really can't start looking at solutions on how we as a district can be more helpful to staff as it relates to their own implicit biases. Does that make sense?
I think I hear what you're saying, Richard. So to the extent that we include this idea of implicit bias more concretely into the UIP is something that we talked about earlier today, and I know that DAC exec is going to go back and work on. You know, I think that if we're being really, you know, if we start to dig into the issue, right? And if you start to see things, trends in your data by school, by person, by level, by area, like you have to start to unravel those bit by bit. Now, I think the dangerous part for us is we don't want that data. The narrower you get, the more easily it would be when you share data for it to be, for people to be identified, employees, kids, so on and so forth. We have to, there's standards that we have to manage and maintain on that. But it could be, right, that there's, it could be a training issue. There certainly could be bias, implicit bias issues, right? It could be, it could be just a school, traditionally how things have been dealt with and they hadn't shifted to new practices, right? It could be somebody who brought practices from another place and they're implementing them here without understanding what we're trying to do. Like, I think that, you know, it almost can get case by case depending on where you go. So like for us as a partnership to dig into what that would look like with DAC, we would have to just make sure that the data is at a level that we would be comfortable where it's not self-identifying, right? But because, you know, once you start to get into potential personnel issues, right? And whether that's coaching, whether that's direction, so on and so forth, that can't be a partnership. That's my job. And it's solely my job, it's not the board's job, that's my job. The job of the board and the DAC is to set this vision of what we need to do and for us to set systems and processes that will allow us to access and know exactly what's happening. Remember, two years ago, everybody had their own matrix, there was no data in the system, right? It's why we started where we did. Now we have the data in the system, we've been providing the training, we have the restorative justice, resources and support. We're working right now on other alternatives to suspension and working with schools. But then you eventually get back to a place where it's individuals who have to adjust, change practice. We have to train, set expectations, so on and so forth. So that would never be something I would sit down with DAC or with the board to do. But if we can get to that level, that makes more sense. And I can be clear on the things that I'm doing or our staff is doing, right? And then we start to see a result of all those actions in the overall results. I think that that's where I would, my best hope for where we would end up in this.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from because like, yeah, we hired you to deal with those particular issues. But I think as part of my role as a board member is to start looking at systemic issues. For example, do we have a systemic issue around racism in our system? And if we do, how do we identify that? And how do we start getting rid of all those particular issues? That's, I think that's my role as a board member and not to get into the weeds in terms of the work that you do, obviously. Yeah, and if I could add, thanks, Rob, for that perspective, because I think that's exactly kind of how we envisioned DAC being a partner on this, right? To think about how we can get at better data quality and really develop processes and structures in place to address these issues in a systemic manner, right? I think that's where we can kind of contribute to being thought partners with you as a part of that process and not going down to the individual level as we recognize that our role is different in that respect. Oh, and sorry, and I do want to be clear. I, you know, we talked about this in DAC numerous times. We appreciate the direction that the district is moving and recognizing this is a process that's going to take some time. And so we just want to make sure that we're active partners in this, given that it is kind of long-term work. And it's hard work, and I think, you know, we appreciate being a part of that process.
I was just going to say that I think it'd be helpful because policy JD, JDR, oh, sorry, it's Nicole again. Our policy says that we're supposed to look at our discipline and our bullying data annually and to inform improvements to the policies. So I think that would be helpful to have some deeper cuts so we really know what we're doing. And that's the work that we're supposed to be doing as well. So any partnership there is, I'd appreciate it.
Lisa here. I guess I just want to ask some questions or maybe push back a little on the idea that we can't have this data shared in a way that allows folks to remain anonymous. Like, there are obviously a variety of ways that we can de-identify data prior to sharing it that still allows folks on the board and or on DAC to have more clarity on where issues exist, whether we're seeing specific individuals or widespread problems across schools or across the area, et cetera, and doing so in such a way that that data is de-identifying, right? I mean, that's something we do pretty regularly in homeless services. We share data, it's de-identify, discuss, and then re-identify back, back at our home agencies so that we can discuss what that means on our level. And it feels like there should be some way for us to de-identify data for the board and or for DAC to look at and then have it be re-identifiable back on your end where issues were.
Potentially. So I think that what would be the next best step is to come back with you all on the process that we would use and the thresholds that we have set, right? So if I'm talking about a specific school and I'm talking. So if I'm talking about a specific school and I'm talking about a specific student in a specific grade of a specific race, like because of those things that exist, right? I think that there's just a level of care that we need to, we need to make sure that we're taking that that is up to an industry standard. So what I propose, certainly, I want to share as much as we can, that's my goal, right? And I need to, and people need to know that their identity is safe as we start to dig in through systemic issues. Remember, we start, we didn't start this with, we have a bunch of people who have issues. These are system-wide issues. The system is the way that it is because we've allowed it to be that way for a long time, right? And now we're changing it and improving it. So I think the next best step would be to get with Jonathan, talk about this conversation here that's recorded, and let's think about how deep could we get? And how deep is useful to have the conversations we need to have? And what would the conversations be around? The subjectivity in the discipline matrix is the first and foremost obvious conversation, right? That you have to have, right? That, and so what level of data do you need to begin to think about that? So that was what I proposed.
And I'm sorry, I feel like I'm yelling at you while I'm sitting next to you, but it's just so rich I can hear us. I hope that's clear.
It's okay.
Yes, that sounds good. I mean, I'm just suggesting that there are ways that I think we could go about having more information available than is currently available without having all of the information available. If we look at ways that we could, for example, look at all K5s in a specific city or a specific area or either a specific network and then, you know, look by grade or et cetera, et cetera. So that wouldn't be quite as specific as like a third grader at Pioneer had the following, but a third grader who was in Lafayette or who was in our, our network area, et cetera. So we can still sort of get some more clarity around where we were seeing issues and where they were standing up without feeling that we were identifying.
And I would say I want to do this sooner rather than later, right? Yeah, I talked about this idea of trust earlier. Like when, when we are suspending Latinx students at twice the rate of white students, right? Like we have some really harsh realities, even though I think we are making progress and steps in the right direction, we are far from okay. So as we think about the data commitments that we would make to one another, I want to make sure that we made those earlier prior to the data coming out, right? Because when the data comes out and if we're like, we're this, you know, we haven't budged, right? We haven't budged for whatever reason, right or wrong. I would want to, I would want to be able to be clear on what we can share and not share and not, and avoid the appearance of, well, we're not sharing the data because the data hasn't budged. I need everybody to understand that I'm fully committed to being transparent because you can't fix this if you're not, right? But I also know that we have standards that we have to follow and that needs to be protected.
Oh, no, I need Rob the thumbs up behind this. No, you couldn't.
Richard didn't see it, you gotta.
You need to yell your thumbs up. Thumbs up! No, I mean, that, that sounds good, I appreciate it. I, I guess all I'm asking for is just that we consider, consider all the things that we could do as we move forward and find ways to make as much information as possible accessible. And I know that you're committed to this and I hear what you're saying and I appreciate it.
And I would say we've never been in a better position to do it, given the work that we've done, the investments we've made, the decisions this board, along with DAC, have made together for the, for all kids in our community. We've never been in a position we are now where we actually can look at things that matter and begin to really move the needle on something that's just wrong, just wrong.
Any more questions on that topic? Richard, anything more on that topic? I think you said no.
No, I think you covered it pretty well. I'm just real concerned that, that we really need to be a little bit more specific in some of those root causes with, you know, with issues around disproportionality. And I think this will probably get to it. I don't think that we've ever had in this, in my lifetime here in Boulder Valley Schools, any real attempt to truly identify issues of implicit bias as it relates to disproportionality in our system. And I'm glad, I think I'm hearing that we're going in that direction, so.
That's what I heard too, Richard. So I just have one more question, Jorge. It's about budget because I've always found DAC input on budget, budget priorities to be really helpful. So I was, for Chris, for Jamila, can you just give us a little more detail? Maybe not today, but what you're thinking and your timing? And I mean, I know we don't have to approve a budget for a while, but it takes a while to respond to these things. To step on the, in the arena of our long-range planning committee, but just what are you guys thinking?
Yeah, I think, if I know, if I understand the timing correctly, we need to make recoverages for the budget by December. And we'll be sending out our survey to our Saks and Principals come here shortly. We're trying to be careful with the timing because we'll need feedback on the UIP first and they're working on that. So we're thinking by October we'll have feedback from the survey and we'll be able to kind of draft budget recommendations based on that survey in, in November.
That sounds great. Do you, anybody else have any? I'm looking at the list, you guys have a very ambitious list for the, for the year, but it's exciting. I think we've talked about, tell us if we've talked about data transparency, long-range planning, policy review, family engagement, SRO and school safety, we've talked about that. And the discipline, discipline matrix, KV and AER, open enrollment and curriculum adoption. I assume that's a next semester thing.
Those are on here. Those are later.
Yeah, that's why I'm, I'm just going to have a list. Because we'll have another opportunity to talk with you all, so I just wanted to make sure we covered all the topics. Does that sound right, Richard and Jorge and Chris and Jamila? Yes?
Good luck.
If I can just make a comment, I just want to thank DAC exec and all of DAC for your just continued active engagement, really partnering side by side with the district, with this board, with our, with our executive team in our schools to help us really identify the issues we need to be identifying and working together to improve outcomes for all students. Just really value the partnership, which I think has just grown stronger and stronger every year I've been here. So I just wanted to say, thank you.
Right, anything else, Jorge?
I think, I think we've covered plenty, I think, already here. But I do want to say thank you to the board and Mr. Brandon Anderson for your responsiveness to our concerns and our interests. You know, we, we think this district is moving in, in the right direction and we're glad to be able to be a part of, of working towards solutions. And so I appreciate the ways in which you are listening and responsive and willing to work with us to think through these issues, so thank you.
Thank you, and I hope you feel better soon. Thumbs up from all of us. Okay, bye-bye.
Legislature passed the, on 2.5. It's our, it's on our party number 2.5. Did they pass legislation last year to recover par-aid funds? So if we could, so some of the, I was just looking at things that we can clean up that have already been addressed.
I think they passed that plus the interest, but I would need to double check. It was the interest that was unclear to me. I know that they were going to pass the payment that was passed due, but the interest, I thought they got that through the last minute too.
So I was just looking at.
There is always an issue, but it's not like the work last year.
And then preschool, I think we will have to clean that up, we'll have to take a look at where we are.
There are two related to preschool in there.
There is 2.4 or something like that. And part of the DAC here, I mean, we still want adequate funding that's not dependent on tobacco taxes.
You know, as this new structure shakes out, maybe there's some law.
And I just had a, and maybe it's for me not being here when these were originally put on, but 3.1 and 3.4? I just wasn't. How are they different or how are they similar, 3.1 and 3.4? I'm just not clear, read it when I read it.
Well, yeah, because it's, one is talking about the system of accountability and the other is talking about the amount of time spent taking test.
Yeah, I think one is just more focused on testing, but I think they could be.
We could combine them.
And this will be an important issue because, as you know, the, you kind of, you have to. So hopefully we can see some specific recommendations about what to do going forward. So we could even lump them together and say we support.
I think this is, this is the year that we really kind of lean in on this whole system. It'll be interesting what happens to re-audit, whether it's inclusive or re-inclusive, depending upon the questions that they ask. I think a lot of people are really nervous on what that thing is going to say. It's not going to be big enough to talk about the issue. But we're seeing, the, the two big issues that I see is one, that there's got to be a better way to demonstrate success in kids in schools for probably two to three years from where they started and yet are still showing up as failure. I think that somewhere that should be captured now, I also think that there should be some type of a like-school comparison that allows for additional points in what I would call beating the odds in depth, which is in Texas, in other states where based on, because what we're seeing now is that if you have, you have, you know, a certain percentage of the kids on primary school, right? That you're almost destined to maybe be bottom of the category. And I think those are troubling trends that we should dig into and figure out a better way to acknowledge that and incentivize growth in new areas.
That makes sense, and maybe stronger, those are stronger together or we can have more teeth into either one of those recommendations. Because I read those and I'm like, yeah, you could say that every year and I don't know what we're really after, but maybe not. And then question I had, two with 3.3, did we want to include language that's specific to declining enrollment with charters? In that, it kind of relates to have letting schools determine how to. Local school boards retain sufficient flexibility to approve continued or discontinued charter schools? We talked about how the impact of declining enrollment, would we want that to be separate or included in that nugget? Like how declining enrollment impacts the district's ability to support charters? So that was just a question I had.
Depends on how Boulder wants to handle that. But I think we should include it. And then the question is, we have the other resolution charters that says that they go into declining enrollment district against the recommendation board that doesn't exist in the living law dollars. We want to put that in there. Yeah, so we have the two charter CASP resolutions that basically just dropped. And another one which we dropped from CASP was a change to, I don't know, but it was a change to make sure that our anti-discrimination provisions for charters with all students are the same on list that they have in the anti-discrimination law. Because it's a, there's a mismatch there. And it was just a decision that we didn't need to buy that file at CASP, that we could easily try to get that done through the legislature.
And then the other topic that we discussed, it's only a state board action. It's a, so, add that to our platform, it's a resolution.
So I thought last week we agreed to do both of those things and our.
I thought we were going to get the language.
Yeah, I thought we were going to do a resolution.
We agreed to do a resolution at the end of last year and we hadn't gotten it into the legislative agenda yet because then it was suggested that we put it legislative instead. And then last meeting, we discussed it and everybody said that they were generally in favor of doing both things rather than choosing one or the other. That's what I have at the, I mean, we can watch the meeting if it's useful.
I think you probably already have, I believe you are, that's your favorite.
It doesn't seem like there's any harm in doing that, right? I mean, we know that this is an issue that Boulder is passionate about, that we are passionate about, that matters, and it doesn't feel like there's any way that we can go too far. I know some of the folks who are coming to speak to us tonight want to talk about whether we can go further and ally with some of our neighboring school districts to do more. And I think the most we can do is what we should do, but certainly putting, putting both the resolutions in on the item where our legislative platform feels like.
So I'm just confused, what would we want to specifically change in the legislation? Because there, the state board would say, and it's not that I'm opposed to the legislature, I don't care what it would look like. The state board is just charged with revising the social studies recommendations. So what would we want to put, would we want to amend the? I know that CDE is looking at, because I think they have such calm data for the school process or maybe in amending the way they do their standards revision to make it less controversial. So maybe, I'm just trying to hear what that would look like in a legislative platform resolution I get. But legislative platform, trying to figure out what it would look like.
I thought legislature had already required that we be inclusive with, you know, with LGBTQ and all, and all of the other things. Is that not right? Because I thought that that was a law and then the Board of Ed wanted to, to, I'm sorry, I can't even think today. Wanted to cut it out because of all the folks they've heard from, but can they?
I have to go look at it. I know that we have to be inclusive. I don't know that that translated in the statute to making it part of the, the standards.
I guess I thought it did.
And that's what I'd have to check.
I believe the state law talks about inclusion and representation in the curriculum and is not specific to grade levels.
That's what I'm thinking of.
And the state board received pressure around looking at the inclusion in K3, not unlike our friends in Florida who are looking at those lower grades.
And I feel like maybe this is the conversation we had last, right? It sort of stopped us out on why we didn't get, didn't get this through then. But I mean, it feels to me like maybe, without, without having written it down, but something along the lines of the idea that we recognize that LGBTQ curriculum issues are non-controversial, are not topics for, I don't know, aren't topics that, that need to be reviewed or that need approval and are representative of the spectrum of what our schools and families look like and should be taught alongside information in courses and curriculum, not just head families. I don't know exactly, like I said, I can be, I'm sort of just on the spot. But I mean, I feel like there's something in the affirmative suggesting that this is not something that is controversial nor something that can be explained in.
If you were going to go legislative platform, it might be not existing law, but closing in new law. Right, that would, maybe that would be the, the way to think through that in case something pops up, which, you know, given the way things are cooking? And I think that's within the realm of possibility. And it clearly just, you know, lets folks have a little bit of value.
I agree with that completely. And I do think that the K, the K3 issue specifically, right, is around the idea that some folks want to treat LGBTQ issues as sex ed rather than as, and I feel like that's the space that we're trying to target, is that this is not what that is. That families that are gay or lesbian or transgender or queer, that none of this is sex education, these are just family structures.
Yeah, and to, to not include it would be specifically to exclude those families. And I don't think that's okay.
So I think we can debug the board, obviously, last year. It's our 10-year anniversary of adoption of.
Yeah.
No, Board Member Garcia, we're just talking about the legislative platform, which was also an issue on the agenda for the work session. And talking about inclusion of language around LGBTQ representation in the curriculum. I mean, we're just, Board Member Sweeney Moran was reminding us that this was addressed at the last meeting, so we're just sort of talking about what the platform language might be on that issue. And we agreed to do a resolution also.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I, I signed off a while ago because I thought it was over.
That was me sending you on a wild goose chase, I apologize.
We had a little confusion about that, but we're back together now.
We're landing on both. Is that where we landed?
That's what I, I've heard. I will say I think a resolution, because it's significantly longer than a platform statement, gives the board the opportunity to talk about the context. statement, gives the board the opportunity to talk about the context for the position. I think the, the comments that Lisa made around this isn't sex education, those get kind of wordy for a platform, but fit within the resolution that gives context for the platform.
No, and I agree, sorry, I was just trying to say that I think that's the, the place from which we're coming in, this is what makes sure the K3 issue that we want to target is about that section.
Yeah, and I think we could build on the board's resolution from last spring around 10 years of work to make sure our transgender students belong in our, feel that sense of belonging with our community. I have one other suggestion I'd make to your legislative platform. I think the days in which you only use this with the state legislature are gone. I think that your opening paragraph can talk about the fact that these are the board's policy positions to be advocated when we're talking about the legislature, the State Board of Education at the federal level, where you also advocate, and with our federal agencies, because I think many of these issues extend across them. I know that we had some discussion also at the last meeting about what are issues that the board wants to address and would actually take a position on. And when I looked at the way we did that at CASB and NSBA, some other organizations, it really centers on the board's vision and mission statement of the school. So this could be a place where we could add some language about addressing issues that impact our PK 12, relate to the board's vision, and then use the language around creating challenging meaningful educational opportunities to sort of scope out that space. Yeah, sounds good. So we could put this on the board's next agenda as an action item?
Study.
You are on the Google group, and waiting for the Board of Education, we're in the right.
Study then action, right?
Because we still need to fill out the language for preschool.
Yeah.
So I would make it study.
Right. But a red line version, an update.
Study.
Sounds good.
And we can add if we want.
And we'll add, we'll add a platform statement on LGBTQ inclusion. I think we can add nothing to the language as well.
Is there anything else we're missing, I want to make sure that we perhaps wrong, that's, that we're studying or not?
I was, do we want to say anything about fentanyl? We talked about vaping, we don't touch on the fentanyl, do we or do we not? That was just when I was reading through.
What would you like to say about it?
So I just, when I was reading through these again, it just popped up, opt-in for that.
I mean, there's legislation that is addressing...
To do what?
We did update our policies last year to allow us to have Narcan.
And we have it over.
You can't remember what was known.
I thought so, because I thought, but let me find out, and let me look at that language and just see.
There's some financial stuff that we might want to change too. Like, we might want to talk about whether we would support doing an adequacy study. There's going to be a CASB resolution on that, to actually look at what the costs of K-12 are. We haven't ever done one as a state. And maybe we would say that we support a referral of Initiative 63, which is to use the surplus. So there might be some additional finance ones that we might want to talk about. That seem like easy one-liners, things to put in the platform.
So we want to talk about that before the next meeting, and then I can put it in the red line for the board.
And depending on what happens with the ballot measure, we might not need 2.8 on preschool.
Right.
Yes.
And given the Supreme Court, I don't know if we can do this, Kathleen's going to kill me, if we want, when we talk about diverting public dollars, we, I don't know if we want to say anything about diverting public dollars to religious institutions that discriminate against LGBTQ. It's just something to think about. Okay. I heard no schools in Fall River, do you?
Never heard of a charter school.
All right, I know we have people waiting, is there anything else? Richard, is there anything you want to add to the legislative platform? We've talked about accountability, we're going to kind of wait...
Oh, did you?
Yeah, we want to see what the audit says, so we're talking about maybe some specifics around that once we see what, because this is a working document, so, you know, we can change it when we see what the audit says. But that's, Rob said, what you didn't hear is that's going to be top of issues, we think, for the legislative session, because of the audit and because we've been waiting for so long for the audit and we know it's time.
And because it was during all of that, I was 14, and because of all of that, right? So that lawsuit's still ongoing, and it, but it lost the recent round, but I don't think that they're done, so.
Right, right. No, no, that was, yeah, I'm glad that you, that you talked about that, yeah.
Anything else, Richard, before we move into the other room?
No, I'm fine, I'm just going to get into my other Google...
There's time for real, we're going to actually move, so make sure your...
All right, all right, bye.